Start here with our study session, which I'll now call to order. And these citizens to be heard. Okay, tonight we have a presentation on family housing by Bridge. Amy, are you introducing this? Okay, before we do that, I just want to just say we have got another hour that the polls are open tonight for anybody listening. So if you haven't done your civic duty, I'll just put in a little pitch there. Thanks, Amy.
Good evening, Mayor Atkin and fellow council members. This study session is being presented in response to housing policy discussions that have been held at both the Housing Committee and Council levels during 2006. Both policy bodies have reviewed the city's affordable housing production status and the methods that the city has utilized to obtain a range of affordable housing choices. In addition, the Housing Committee has had a presentation from Bridge on family housing development and has made recommendations on some revisions to the ordinance, also known as the inclusionary housing ordinance relating to the process that the city uses to designate below-market-rate units. In tonight's presentation, staff will be presenting a number of potential revisions to the housing set-aside ordinance for your review that have been recommended by the Housing Committee, as well as an analysis of potentially changing the ordinance income mandate from the current moderate income to a mix of very low, low and moderate income levels. We have tonight, per your request, in April, a presentation by Ann Silverberg, who's the Director of Acquisitions at Bridge Housing, on projects they've developed that have been targeted to families with children. The way I'd like to proceed with the presentations is to invite her up to first present, and then I will present these various ordinance revisions, and then after that, we can have discussion and questions. So I'll call up Ann at this point. That's...
Good evening, Mayor Atkin and fellow council members. Thank you very much for inviting me here today to talk to you about family housing. Again, I'm Ann Silverberg, and I work with Bridge Housing. And for those of you who don't know Bridge, we are a nonprofit affordable housing development company.
Excuse me for interrupting you a second. Could you talk right into that microphone?
Right into, sure.
Because otherwise, it's not gonna, it's not gonna get out there.
Better, yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. So Bridge Housing Corporation is a nonprofit affordable housing company based in San Francisco. We work all throughout the Bay Area, as well as parts of Southern California. And while I definitely do not have all of the answers about family housing, we have built several family developments, and I thought I could talk a little bit about some of our experiences. I have some photos to show you here on the computer. I guess it will come up on your screen. I guess there are also some project pages that you've received in your packets. If you have additional information that you'd like, we'd be happy to get that to you as well. The first thing I would say about Emeryville, it seems to me that Emeryville is quite diverse in terms of its resident population and employee population, and this is very much the same as the rest of the Bay Area, although there are few parts of the Bay Area where there's a little more predictability and consistency in that when you build housing at a certain income level, you're pretty sure that you're gonna have some families moving in. For example, in Napa, we've built three developments in Napa, and we built at a certain income level rental housing, and we had many families move in. And so our first development, we had many three-bedroom units, then the next one, many more three-bedroom units, and then some four-bedroom units. A slide here. And then we incorporated soccer fields and basketball court and other things. And there, the challenge was just making sure that we had the units that would accommodate the needs of the families that we knew were going to be living there. But in many parts of the Bay Area, and I believe this to be true, in Emeryville, there's not that same level of predictability or that same correlation. And so you don't know for sure, when you're building new developments, if they are going to attract families. And so I think it's more of a, I wouldn't say quite field-of-dream scenario, but something like that where if you build it, they will come. If you can design and build units that are sized for families and are attractive to families, and if the developments include amenities and programs and services that are attractive to families, well, then you have a higher likelihood of attracting families. And the other part of this, when you're talking about amenities, is neighborhood amenities. If you have amenities in the neighborhood that are close to the development, schools, libraries, parks, of course, that's also going to help attract families to the development. In the case of affordable housing, there are many financing sources that require that the development is within a certain proximity to those neighborhood amenities, so it's quite important. I'm gonna talk about a few developments here, and I have some photos, as I say. Some of these are not exactly applicable to Emeryville. Maybe the density is off, but it's still worth looking at. This one here is a 306-unit development located in Milpitas. It's called Montevista. As I say, 306 units, 735 parking places. It's a pretty big development, but at 20 units an acre, it's a little less dense than what you might see here. But in this development, we have a few amenities that were particularly attractive to families. We didn't design it necessarily as family housing. We knew there would be families, but there were many more families than we expected. There are close to 200 children here on the site. The main concept of the design was the landscape spine. It's basically a big green area that runs the length of the development and, or the length of the site, and there are amenities that are sort of scattered along the landscape spine. So totlot, children's play areas, barbecue. You can see the children's play area off in the distance here. You can't really get a full picture of it with this slide, but it runs the full length of this...
We can see it pretty well on the screen.
You can? Oh, good. Okay, great. This is a barbecue area...
Less well up here.
And I'm sorry to do this to you, because I know you're trying to operate the computer, but your mouth keeps moving too far. Now, would you rather have a handheld mic, so you can stand closer to the computer?
You know, maybe I'll just move it this way.
Yeah, cool.
Does that work?
Yeah, and we can hear you here, but it may not be going out to the people that are, all those millions of people that are home watching us tonight.
That's right. I wanna make sure that they can hear every word, every word.
Thanks.
Okay. So here's the barbecue area. We have several of those scattered through the site, as well as children's play areas. Here is a photo, which is not the most beautiful photo, I admit, but it is of a sport court. And this is not anything earth-shattering, but it works quite well. It's just a paved area. It's fenced. It has some striping for various sorts of games. And residents can go to the office and check out balls or equipment, nets, whatever they might need for a variety of sporting games. And it's something for older children to be engaged with, and we often focus on the younger kids and totlots and play areas, but it's nice to have a place for the older kids to go as well. This development also has a pool and a spa and a community building, which we call the cabana, because it's located next to the pool. Inside, we have a fitness room and a community room that residents use for gatherings, and also we have a, what used to be a business center, but has been converted to a computer lab, because there was such a demand for that kind of service. There were so many children who could really take advantage from, of computer classes in a computer lab, and computers are available. This next development, we're increasing the density quite a bit.
San Francisco, that's Church Street, right?
That's right, that's right, exactly. So we went from 20 units an acre out in Milpitas to 93 units an acre in San Francisco, so a serious increase in density. This is 100% affordable, a lot of three-bedroom units. There are a lot of children who live here, close to 50 children here in this development. It sort of dispels the myth that families won't live in high-density housing. There are a lot of families who live here in this development. One, one factor here is the larger units, the affordable rents, but also a lot of the common area amenities and services. Here is the courtyard, which is kind of a nice open courtyard with some meandering paths. You can't really see it, or maybe you can on your monitor, but there's a play area there that's shared by the resident children, as well as the children that are enrolled in the onsite daycare center. And that is a really big feature, a really important feature. I'm a parent of a one-year-old and a three-year-old, so I'm hypersensitive to this issue, but it's very hard to find good childcare, and it's very hard to get into the good childcare. Well, here, there's a childcare center right on-site with a priority for the residents, and that works really well. It also is open to the community, and it's been great in fostering great relationships with the community, and that's something that's really important to us.
Who operates the daycare?
There's a nonprofit provider that is not related to Bridge, but we are in contract with them. We went through a long process in selecting them and bringing them in, and they had a part in designing the center and the outdoor play area, getting the licensing as well.
Did Bridge, or is Bridge subsidizing in any way the daycare center?
No, no.
Oh, it did?
Although we assisted in getting some funds for the center, but Bridge itself and the development itself is not subsidizing the center.
So the nonprofit's basically carrying that load on their own?
That's right. Again, we assisted in helping get the funds for, and obviously provided the space as well.
And they charge for their services?
They do, they do, but it's, I'm not exactly sure what the prices are, but they're affordable prices for the residents.
And that's, it's a, it's not a, it's a private nonprofit?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, exactly. There's a view of the inside of the daycare center. This was before the opening, and all the children's artwork is not quite yet up on the walls. It looks a little different now, a little more lived in, but you can see the very small chairs and tables. Also on this, in this development, we have community areas available. There are a lot of classes that take place for the children and families. There's a nutritional cooking class and a theater class and computer classes. Here's someone working at the computer at the development. All right, this development is in Walnut Creek, not quite as dense as the last one. This is Coggins', and it's Coggins Square, and it's 40 units an acre. There are 87 units here, 116 parking places, and about 50 children. Here, this was developed in conjunction with market-rate ownership development, and the outdoor areas are shared between the two developments. We've done this in a couple of projects, and it works very well. So there's a pool and a grassy open area and some barbecue space, and it's shared between the residents of both of the developments, and it provides an opportunity to provide a little more amenity than we may have otherwise been able to with just a straight affordable housing development. Talked a lot about rental, but here's an ownership example. This is 100% ownership. It's 100% affordable ownership. It was built a long time ago, preceded my time at Bridge. But this is Parkview Commons in San Francisco. It's 114 units, 72, I believe, units or three-bedroom units. A lot of families purchased units here. They were priced at 30 to 50% of the market at the time is a very good deal. And as Don Turner used to say, 114 families were lucky to get housing, and about 4,000 families went away kicking sand. So certainly a great need for this kind of housing. It's very difficult to do today. There's another picture of that. And I'm not really gonna highlight this one, but this is another one in San Jose. I will mention that a lot of developments that are 100% affordable, people are able to live and save money and then go on to buy housing elsewhere in the community, which is a nice way for people to move up. And what happens then is that more families move in with children, and so you just continue having a lot of children in the development. Sometimes if people stay for a long time, the children grow up and they're older, and you don't have family housing anymore. But, you know, if there are other opportunities, certainly if there's, if there are other opportunities to buy subsidized units, and I know Emeryville has done a lot of work in that regard, which is wonderful. So in general, I would say that if you can size units appropriately, build in amenities within the units and the development, and cite them appropriately, you'll hopefully encourage families to come and live in the developments they build. I think that's it. I'll turn it back over to Amy.
Thanks. You've been beating a drum that I've been beating for a while, which is that if you plan it with the amenities for a project and plan it right, then it, then it's not a problem to have, it draws families.
Mayor, can I have one question? Does Bridge manage all their apartment complexes? When they build them, do they manage them?
Yes, well, most of the developments. There are a few developments where we contract with third-party management companies, just a few. They are specific in nature, but almost all of them are managed by our affiliate Bridge Property Management Company.
Thank you.
Thank you. My presentation isn't quite as glamorous, but it represents quite a bit of work on the part of the Housing Committee. We met in early October and hashed through some of these revisions, and it took quite some time to get to the point where we could make a recommendation on some language changes. To begin, I wanted to just go over some of the key terms of our current ordinance before getting into the unit designation process. The city's housing ordinance requires for projects of 30 or more units, a 20% set-aside at the moderate-income level, and this applies to both rental and for-sale projects. In ownership projects, the affordability period is 45 years, and in rental projects, it's 55 years. And the ordinance terms are effectuated through these individual affordability agreements that we negotiate between the city and the project owner. In terms of the below-market-rate unit designation process, the affordability agreements that the city enters include exhibits that show the floor plans and the designated BMRs, a list of the unit and project amenities, and the pricing or rents that apply to the BMR units. Emeryville Warehouse was the first inclusionary project that we negotiated. That was done in 2000. Since that time, we've negotiated 18 agreements, Glass House Lofts being the most recent one, for a total of 323.
Eighteen in six years?
Eighteen, yes, 18 projects.
Wow.
Right. So for 1,700 units that are either built or they're under construction at this point or about to start construction, and 323 of those units are below-market-rate units. And I think I'm on the wrong slide. I'm still, this is my first PowerPoint, so let me go with the previous one.
But if you hadn't said anything, we probably wouldn't have noticed.
You would have. Since the adoption of some of our earlier agreements, such as the Terraces or 1,500 Park, the city has improved its position with respect to negotiating these agreements and designating the BMRs. In those earlier cases, the BMRs might have tended to be on the smaller size and not represented the overall project mix. We've had mixed results on the kind of twin goals in the ordinance of geographic distribution of the units and the BMR units needing to be proportional to the mix of units in the project as a whole. For example, in your packet, there's the 1401 Park Project, which we negotiated last year. We have a mix of units that represents the project overall, but the top floor of that project does not have any BMR units. And I think the developer made the reasonable case that those were kind of premium-view units, and that's where they were going to be making the sales revenue to help offset the impacts of the inclusionary ordinance. Two sections of the ordinance, and this was the part we worked through at the Housing Committee, address the city's goals for the designation and geographical distribution and amenity levels of the BMR units. Section 9.9-4, 623, and then 6210. The general requirements section, which is 623, is somewhat misleading in what is expected for the geographical distribution of the units and proportionality question in that it has language about reasonable distribution and then concludes with a sentence that the units need to be directly proportionate. So that's one issue with that. On the subject of amenities, it's a bit more straightforward, although it doesn't address project amenities. It really deals with the unit amenities need to be identical. The language, if you'll bear with me on that, is unless the city finds compelling reasons to the contrary, the set-aside units shall be reasonably dispersed throughout the development where feasible. The mix and type of units shall be reasonably proportionate to those of the project as a whole, and shall be comparable with the design of the market-rate units in terms of appearance, materials, and finished quality. And the written agreement, which is our affordability agreement, needs to include a breakdown of the units, which shall be directly proportionate.
Amy, can I answer up here?
Yes.
In the case of the Terraces, where we found that the below-market-rate units were not built the same as the others, and where a considerable number of those units are suffering problems because they can't even be occupied, what is the city's leverage in that area where these problems exist?
In terms of the Terraces project directly, I guess I would ask our city attorney on how we need to handle some of the individuals who have not been able to be in their units. Do you feel like...
I'm not sure that's what Councilmember Bukowski's question was.
Well, I'm saying that we have units, we have a project where the below-market-rate units were not constructed the same as the other units. Both Councilmember Cassis and I went on a tour, and that's something that we witnessed.
And that is allowed by your present ordinance?
We have something in here about amenity levels, which is one of the issues that those, those unit owners had.
Right, okay.
So, so there's language that the housing can be looked at, that Amy's gonna get to, about how to deal with that amenity level.
Okay, and then where the units can't be occupied, is there some measure of relief that can be provided, or is that not?
No.
No? All right.
Well, as long as, would you prefer to finish before we ask questions, or ask questions?
Can we finish the presentation and then ask questions?
Sure. No, I was gonna ask one, I'll wait.
I did wanna say, on this section 6210, it's about the ability to reduce the amenity in square footages, and this has been used much less frequently because it requires a demonstration on the part of the developer of economic hardship, and the way we analyze that is that we obtain their performas if they're willing to share that, which often they're not willing to do. The Housing Committee on this second section is not recommending any changes to that section. It does allow this economic hardship clause to stay in place. The Housing Committee is recommending the first section to be revised to make more clear the goals of the city, that BMR units be geographically distributed and proportional to the project mix as a whole. The committee felt it was important to convey that it's not the city's expectation that units such as premium units or penthouse units be designated as below-market-rate housing. Also, because developers often offer upgrades, and we can't add the cost of that onto the price of the BMR units, the committee felt it was important to stipulate in the ordinance that the below-market-rate and market-rate units have equal amenities pre-upgrade. So for example, it would be okay for a market-rate purchaser to upgrade to hardwood flooring from carpeting, as long as that carpeting is provided throughout the project, both the BMR units and the market-rate units. Finally, parking is not now specifically addressed in the ordinance, and there, we wanted to make sure that it was stated somewhere in the ordinance that parking was equally provided to both below-market-rate households and market-rate households. So kind of a concern about having an equitable distribution. The language of this ordinance that the Housing Committee is recommending, I'm sorry I wasn't able to strike out reasonably, but if I could read this, we're deleting the "where feasible" and "reasonably" language, and then we're adding some language. So unless the city finds compelling reasons to the contrary, the set-aside units shall be dispersed throughout the development. The mix and type of units shall be proportionate to those of the project as a whole, with the exception that premium units, example, penthouses or top-floor view units, shall not be required to be set-aside units, and shall be comparable with the design of the base-level market-rate units prior to upgrades in terms of appearance, materials, and finished quality. Parking designated for the set-aside units shall be provided in an equitable manner. Is that provided for the market-rate units?
I would like to offer a slight wording change.
But I thought we're gonna save our comments to the end.
Oh.
Or we could, or we could add that in the, because that is one of the actions that we're asking the council to consider.
Right.
Is text, you know, the approval of this, or we could have some, if you have substitute language.
Well, it's clarified, the "prior to upgrade" that you've underlined there, I would just like to clarify that it's "prior to optional upgrades by the purchaser."
Yeah, I had the same thing. I called it...
That's all.
That's the intent.
I called it purchaser-funded.
Yeah.
Prior to purchaser-funded upgrades. I was gonna suggest that.
Right, right, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
I, with reference to the parking, I, this could be a very controversial thing, but if the occupant of a BMR unit doesn't have a car, could the cost of that unit be reduced to reflect the fact that they're not gonna have a parking space? I mean, is that something that would be appropriate to include here?
I think it should be included for all the units, and so I would happily...
On the same basis than any other thing.
I would happily suggest it.
I mean, the whole point is, the whole point is that we don't wanna repeat what happened at the Terraces, where their parking spaces are outside of some additional security.
Right.
And so what this language says, that it's gotta be equitable as that provided for the market-rate units. So if that would include lessening the price for the, for not getting one or something, as long as, the main thing is not to have it be different than the market rate.
Right, okay.
That's all.
Next section is just to briefly address three revisions that the city attorney's office has recommended for the ordinance. The first is to change the ordinance definitions of affordable housing costs to be consistent with the state health and safety code definitions, which are shown in the box on the screen. The percentages shown in this table are indicating the maximum that a household can spend on either rental or ownership housing to have it qualify as affordable. And we are actually using these definitions when we establish pricing on the units or the rents, and when we do our annual chart showing what the sales prices are based on the Alameda County median incomes.
And why not just say in this section that it should be consistent with the state health and safety code, rather than be explicit so that when the state law changes, we gotta come back and change this?
Yeah, well, we're not presenting you the order, the actual revisions to the ordinance tonight. I mean, I think we, we would be coming back after the direction tonight with the actual ordinance, and we could talk about how that is worded.
And we should do that in ordinances, because the state laws change so often that our ordinances are often lacking.
Lacking.
So, okay.
The second change is to add language to the ordinance to stipulate that projects converting from rental to condominiums comply with our ordinance regardless of when they were originally constructed. And we actually adopted condo, the city adopted a condo conversion ordinance earlier this year, and it would just be making this consistent with the language that's in that at this point. Finally, it's necessary for us to add a properly drafted waiver provision to the ordinance that allows a developer to be waived from the inclusionary requirement if there is not a reasonable relationship between the project impact and the inclusionary requirement. And this will just, this language will strengthen our ordinance, basically. Okay, moving into the discussion of the potential revision of the ordinance, income-level mandates from the 20% set-aside at moderate to 15% with 5% very-low income, 5% low and 5% moderate income. The Housing Committee, as I mentioned, has discussed this topic, and they had recommended that the ordinance not be changed, but back in April, when the council discussed this, they requested, you requested further analysis of it. In reviewing what different mix of income levels could be achieved in the city's ordinance, staff focused on what level could be considered cost-neutral to project developers from what the current ordinance requires. And in our analysis of a hypothetical project, the 15% set-aside would be feasible with a mix of the 5-5-5. It's valuable, as we look at this, to consider the housing production implications of the revision as the city embarks in the next couple of years on both an update to our housing element, as well as we'll be next year, in the middle of the year, updating as well as we'll be next year, in the middle of the year, updating the tenure housing compliance plan, which is an agency requirement. Under California Community Redevelopment Law, the agencies must ensure that 15% of the overall housing produced in the project areas are produced for very low, low and moderate income households. And within that percentage, 9% are for low or moderate, and 6% for very low. As shown in the slide over the period of our tenure compliance plan, which is 2005 through 2014, we're showing, at least at this point, what we know, 2,900 units that would be constructed, of which 392 low-moderate units are projected, which we're needing to track whether that's a surplus or deficit from our past period. It's a 127-unit surplus, and 176 very-low-income units, although that results in a 17-unit deficit that we must make up. These are not goals, these are actual requirements. These numbers are based on the current ordinance, the 20% set-aside at moderate income.
What happens if we don't make up the deficit?
Well...
Well, it's a requirement of the redevelopment law, and I'll let Michael talk about what people can do in order to force you. But in other communities where they haven't been complying with their housing requirements, there's been lawsuits filed by housing advocates to compel the agency to produce the housing.
So, looking at the same period, if, I ran the projected units against, you know, this 5-5-5 mix, and the city continues to have a surplus of low-mod units, but we would substantially reduce the number of, or the deficit on the very-low-income side, which could be, I'm sure we could find certainly projects that those three units could be made up in. Staff is also tracking what, how we're doing with our A-BAG regional housing fair share allocation goals for purposes of our housing element planning. And it's expected we'll have updated numbers in the next couple of months, and we will-
I got them in my mail today.
Yeah, so what I'm presenting tonight does not reflect those numbers, because we do want to roll that out to, you know, have a discussion with both the Housing Committee and the council about those numbers, because they are, it's a significant jump from our current period of 1999 through 2006. If the ordinance is kept, so what I did with this was I looked at, I used our 99 through '06 numbers, but I projected out the projects that we expect to pull permits for through mid-2008, which is when we're supposed to have our final numbers. So, using that period, we would meet 78% of our very-low-income goal, 83% of the low-income goal, and 121% of the moderate-income goal. In revising the ordinance, it would improve things. The city would meet 82% of the very-low-income goal, 92% of the low-income, and 111% of the moderate-income goal. We're way over the top on the overall goal. So, as the council is considering whether to look at revising the ordinance to this new mix, you may want to, you know, think about some of the policy issues with it. The change would certainly assist us in meeting our agency housing production requirements and getting farther along on the A-BAG goals. The analysis that I conducted was meant to show at what levels this change would be cost-neutral. It was a hypothetical project. Developers might argue that, you know, for their project type, for their construction type, for the unit mix, they'd come up with something different. That might end up forcing some more, you know, during the negotiation period, more of this kind of review of performas and economic feasibility analysis, which we haven't had to do too much of. Developers have been, you know, coming in and they comply with our ordinance. Finally, there may be some marketing implications to it. I'm not, on the ownership-for-sale side, the very-low-income target may present to some developers some, you know, hurdle in their mind on how to do that marketing. And to wrap up finally, we are asking for the council to give some direction on making these revisions to the ordinance. The first is the section general requirements, the text that I read you that was revised. The second is the reduction in square footage and amenity section to have that remain in place. Action on the three city attorney office recommended revisions. And then finally, how you want to proceed on revising the ordinance to the 15% 5-5-5 plan. So, thank you for your time.
Any questions to Amy?
And I also want to remind you that if you have questions for Ann as well.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Adkin, I just have a few comments to make. Amy was quite correct in saying that the Housing Committee spent a lot of time going through these issues, and I hope the council takes very seriously their recommendations, because we did spend a lot of time, and there was quite vigorous debate back and forth. I'd like to address, and I thank all those members of the Housing Committee and Amy for the time that they spent and the care and consideration they gave to this housing issue. I have some concerns about our projections moving forward to 2011, '12. We have just come through a significant housing boom. I believe that there's, as, you know, most other people believe, there's going to be a softening of the market, a different approach from the developers. And so, I would like to address, under the recommendations that Amy is bringing forward, the number four, that rather than making a decision tonight or giving a direction tonight, that we instruct the staff to bring together a meeting of those developers to get some feedback from them as to what their considerations are on this. Given that we have this underlying goal of providing affordable housing in the city of Emeryville, we are somewhat partners with the developers. We should get a substantial amount of input from them as to their considerations to what's being proposed here. So, I'm asking the council to delay any action on this until we can set up that kind of a meeting.
Mayor, if I might?
Yeah.
I'm okay with delaying, but I think, rather than just having staff have the roundtable discussion, I'd like that to be, you know, perhaps a separate meeting that's just a study session with us there. Because I know when, you know, Charlie's brought all these people, and Diana brought all these people into the General Plan Committee, it's really, it's really educational when everybody sits at the table and talks about, like we did on the parking issue, and the cost of parking and so forth. And so, I'd like to gain that information and not have just staff gain it and then regurgitate it back to us.
Don't support that, Dick.
Yeah, and then the other thing I'd like to ask, and Amy, you put a tremendous amount of work into this report, and I appreciate it greatly. What would help me, and I started to do this myself, and then I kind of got lost, is there a way to take this information and get it on a chart? So that we could look, for example, and say, here's the A-BAG goals, here's the, you know, the regional housing goals, here's where we would be under the 20%, here's where we'd be under 5-5-5. So that we could compare the numbers side-by-side going right down the page. That, if that's not, is that a huge task? It's hard for, I mean, I really wasn't having my success there.
It wouldn't be a hard task, but I think it could be folded into the-
Are you talking about that grid on a project-by-project basis? Like, if this project was just at 20% or if this project were at 5-5-5?
Well, just kind of looking at this analysis that, you know, that's in here and taking it forward. I mean, any way that it can be presented that would be easier to compare the numbers. Because I will tell you, even though I appreciate how much work went into this and how well-written it is, I got lost in here. And, I mean, it's a lot of information, and so I'm just trying to figure out some way to make it more, a little more user-friendly. And maybe it is easier to do it on a project-by-project basis than an overall look. But we're trying to look at this and say, well, here's the experience we've had. If we'd had a 5-5 and 5, here's, isn't that what you're kind of doing here? Here's where we'd be?
It is, but we are, we are getting these new numbers for the next, for the 2006 through '13 period for A-BAG. And so, that, this could, this information could be put on to one page with all that, and so it would be a somewhat different analysis on the A-BAG side, but that, it would be fresh.
Sure.
This 5-5-5 does not relate to any other legal provision, right? It's not, it doesn't, it's not, doesn't correspond to the requirements of redevelopment?
No, it's, well, the 15% does, but you could, you would change it, you would change the very-low to 6%. And then the remaining 9% would be low and moderate.
Mayor Adkin, a thought has come to my mind that you just got the new numbers from A-BAG. I would very much like to have a representative of A-BAG come to this council and explain to us what their rationale is for providing these numbers to jurisdiction, where the city of Emeryville is in the nine-county Bay Area in terms of, you know, in our past production and where we fit, and what happens to those jurisdictions that absolutely are not participating in this at all. They get the A-BAG numbers, but they really do very little with them. You know, we look to the east, we can see that right close over the hills. Would everybody else like to hear from A-BAG?
I think that's fine, but I also think it would be helpful, again, I'm not, I don't know why I've all of a sudden gotten any charts, but it would be good for us to put forth, you know, what our goals have been over the last 10 years or whatever, or whatever period's easy to do, and what we've made. And I think there are some comparative numbers out there for other cities. But I remember a presentation at the mayor's conference down in Fremont a few years ago, where we just got our new numbers, and they were, I mean, they were ridiculously high. And it seemed that A-BAG was sort of admitting at that meeting that the more you build, the more they expect you to build.
Well, let's get some accountability here from A-BAG.
Yeah.
Does everybody support that?
Yeah, but let's look at the numbers.
I'm not sure what that's gonna accomplish, actually, but-
But is it okay to, if we pull the information, so here's the, you know, again, on a sheet of paper, here's the Emeryville story. I mean, here's what the goals have been, and here's what we've achieved. But, you know, they keep going with the numbers, and pretty soon, we're gonna have to build some more land somewhere or have nothing but high-rises in town to meet these goals. It's just, it's getting ludicrous. I agree with you, Noah.
My goal is to provide as much affordable housing as possible, so I'm not-
As much what?
Affordable housing as possible. So, I'm not sure the purpose of bringing A-BAG in will just beat them up, you know.
Well, the problem is, we all agree with that, and that's what we've been working on for a long time here. But when they give you goals that are just ridiculous, regardless of how, I mean, I believe we've done a better job in that regard than just about any of our neighbors. And we get rewarded for that by getting higher goals again the next time around. And that doesn't seem right to me. And so, I don't, if there's gonna be sanctions for not meeting-
But there's no sanction, there's no-
Well, no, but that was, but that was the thing that they were, they're building more into the law, and they warned us about that, and I don't know what's happened with that, that they in fact were building more sanctions into it, of monies that would be withheld from the feds and the state if you didn't meet your goals. Now, maybe that's all gone away, because everybody was certainly worried about it. But, I mean, I just wonder how much affordable housing Piedmont has built in the last 10 years.
Well, if you extrapolate A-BAG's goals, in the year 2050, Emeryville would have a skyline of Pacific Park Plaza.
Right, exactly what I'm saying.
That's the way you meet those kind of goals. We've got to get a handle on what's the rationale here? How close is it to the reality of the housing industry? I don't, I don't see it as an opportunity to beat A-BAG up. I would like to get some real hard answers from these people.
And I think, what I remember from that presentation, and we could sort of anticipate that anyway, I mean, they've got their projections for what the population of the Bay Area is gonna be in 2050.
That's right.
And then they say, we don't want to keep encouraging suburban sprawl. We want to have urban infill, and therefore, to absorb all these people, we have this amount of space, and here's your share of those new people.
Thirty-story towers.
Well, my understanding is that they look at the city general plans, and they see how much land is owned for residential, and then that's how they make their determination. So, if you have a site like AC Transit, which never redevelops, but it's designated as housing, they consider that to be a housing site, and therefore, you would expect that in a projection.
So, getting back to these bullet points of Amy's.
What page are you on?
Page 10 of 11. I would propose that the city council accept the work of the Housing Committee and direct staff to move forward on items 1, 2, and 3.
I will, I'll second that if, you know, if we have that word change, purchaser-funded.
Right, right.
And also, I just, before we get to a voter, if there's more discussion, I just want to make sure that I understand what we mean, because 1 and 2 are kind of the same. What do we mean by the word "proportionate"? I mean, what is the meaning of that within the context of our ordinance?
It means that if you have a project with a mix of, say, one, two, and three-bedroom units, like 40, 20, and 40, that you're, and then you figure out how many BMR units you have, then the mix of BMR units has to equal that, that overall mix.
And that's what I assumed it was. Is that defined anyplace in this ordinance, what we mean by proportional? Or is it obvious? Is it self-defining?
No, it's in there.
And we don't, we don't, where is the word proportional defined?
I don't believe it is. It's not defined.
I would just suggest that that might be something we ought to do. Unless everybody thinks it's obvious.
Well, proportional is proportional.
The proportional, the one issue that came up was, okay, we get a proportional mix of unit type, but that might not be geographically proportional. And so, we had this, like, stacking problem at the terraces, right? Where maybe the unit, the floor plans were kind of proportional, but they weren't geographically spread around. So, and you mentioned in your report the trade-off between those two things, so-
What's geographically proportional? What does that mean?
Spread out around, not, so the BMRs aren't clustered.
Within the project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, geographically dispersed.
Okay.
So, you know, I guess there's this one issue there. If, you know, are we looking at unit type? Is that our number-one ranking, and then our secondary ranking is geographically dispersed? So, we avoid this stacking problem?
There, it's, the way it's written now, it doesn't prioritize those two goals.
They're not mutually exclusive.
No.
No, but I guess the question is, is that what's a greater value? And do we put that into the ordinance? Is it a greater value to get a mixture of unit types, and I would argue that it is?
Than to have them spread out, you know?
Spread out within the complex. To get the variety of unit types, I think, is more important.
Yeah, I mean, the main thing you're trying to avoid with spreading out is to not end up having an area stigmatized in some way. You know, this is where the, quote, "poor people" live.
Right.
Or some designation like that.
Right, you don't want to get them all clustered together.
Yeah, so, but there's also building, you know, things that happen. And so, I understand how some of that occurs, so you're right, there are some trade-offs there.
The intent is clear here. I think you have to have a little flexibility to negotiate. All of these developments have different aspects to them. I think the way it's written, it has flexibility.
Can I just ask the attorney, Mike, are you concerned about the word proportional at all?
No, I just had a different issue that I wanted to touch on.
Okay, so then, nobody else is worried about it, I'll just forget about it.
What's your issue, Mike?
My issue really relates to item 2, about the notion of totally eliminating the idea of being able to reduce the amenity or square footage in a BMR unit as it relates to the other item that's in item 3, which is some of our concern about making sure we have an adequate sort of waiver provision in the ordinance, where if a developer comes forward and is arguing for a reduction in the number of units, for various legal or technical arguments, they may- they may make, you may not want to foreclose your ability to say, okay, you know what, rather than just reducing the number of units down to 10 percent, we'd like to keep, you know, that same 20 percent figure, or whatever the numbers are that you end up with, but recognizing your arguments will allow you to reduce the amenity level in those BMR units so that they're able to make up that financial hit that they're claiming, and obviously they're providing some proof to you that it exists. So, what I'm suggesting is, is that while you may eliminate that section that specifically provides for it, when you talk in terms of adding language for some sort of waiver provision, I think we'll want to add some language in there that leaves open the option that in the context of looking at a waiver, that you could entertain a reduction in the amenity level to, you know, to effectuate that appeal.
I need to ask a question here, and this is purely educational. When we have below-market-rate units, the city provides a subsidy to the developer to make up the difference between the cost of the market rate and the below-market rate. Is that right?
No.
No? Okay.
Sometimes you have authorized agreements for us to buy down, say, a moderate-income units down to low income, and then in those situations, we've provided, you know, the financial assistance, I believe it's directly to the homeowner if I'm not mistaken, sometimes it is, to essentially buy down that moderate down to a lower or very low.
Okay.
Well, and I just wanted to clarify that the second, that's Section 6210, the Housing Committee recommended that that stay in the ordinance.
Okay, I wasn't, well, I wasn't sure where the Council was going on that.
Yeah, I'll just say, I don't think that I want to have flexibility to reduce the amenities. I mean, after seeing the terraces...
I agree. I don't think so.
I just, I just...
No flexibility.
I mean, if you talk about stigmatization...
You'd rather have, in the event somebody was making a, you know, cogent argument that, you know, they should have a reduction, you'd rather have fewer units, obviously, you know, same across-the-board units as the market-rate units, as opposed to saying, well, okay, we'll keep the same number of units, but we'll allow you to reduce the amenity.
In fact, I think penalties should be imposed when they do that, really.
No, but I mean, I understand the question you're asking.
So that's really sort of a...
Do you want more housing units, or do you want a rigid structure here that you cannot absolutely reduce amenities?
We want people to be treated the same is what we want.
Our goal here is trying to get affordable housing units for low and very-low income people.
I think the goal is we want people to be treated the same. That's the goal.
I mean, I think that the way we could structure it is that that would be something you could consider in the context of an appeal, so that it's not sort of our standard practice that we're going to allow for that, but in the event somebody's able to put forth evidence and they come before the Council with an appeal that says, you know, we should be able to reduce the number of units, we could write it such that, okay, well, instead of that, we would rather entertain a reduction in amenity level. So that's something for you to consider.
I think that's a bad idea because what that means is that you have a great deal of knowledge in constructing the project, the contractors, everyone who's working on it, they know which units are going to be the below-market rate because those are going to get less of a finish, and so I would worry that even in the construction phase, they would be short-changed, those units would be short-changed. So I think that Ken is right, Dick is right, so...
I mean, just in the terraces, for example, the ceilings, I mean, in the below-market-rate units, the ceilings weren't finished.
Right.
And it just, when you walked into the units, it was, you know, two of them side-by-side, below-market not, same unit, same floor plan, ceilings finished in one, you know, whatever that concrete or that stuff is, that's what you're looking at in the other, I mean, I don't know, there's just, there's a real difference there.
Right.
So I guess, I guess my answer is the same as Ken's, is I, I guess I would go for less units than really having people coming into something where they're always going to be clearly identified as being in those less enjoyable units.
Especially when they turn over.
The whole idea is to make everybody the same. That's the whole idea of having them mixed and everything.
Inclusionary zoning.
We're making them all the same. It's discrimination when you're going to do one less than the other one, especially when you're supposed to do them all the same.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I want to see the amenities.
I also question what the value is of not going with the 5, 5, and 5. I mean, the goal is to have a broad range of affordable units, and these are percentages, and each project can, I assume, can seek to deviate from that, just as each project can deviate from the current 20 percent. But the problem I see with the current 20 percent for moderate, or the current 20 percent for below-market rate is that the developer has an incentive to have those all moderate, and that clearly is not our goal. We would like, I think it's fair to say that we would like to have very-low and low as well as moderate, and so I think that that should be the goal, and the staff report says that the 5, 5, and 5 is fiscally neutral. So what input do we get from the developer? The developer, I suppose, could refute that it's fiscally neutral. They could say, no, it's not fiscally neutral. But the problem is that if I have to decide between input from the developer who's biased and input from the staff who's looked at it, I would go with the staff because they're the experts and they're not biased. And so it seems quite logical to go with the 5, 5, and 5, so I don't see why we hold off on that.
The clarification that I would seek is the very-low and low percentages are a little different in, under redevelopment law than it is under the A-BAG fair-share goal, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the redevelopment law just says 6 percent at very-low, but that they don't say how much should be low?
They don't, it's low or mod. The 6 percent is very-low, and then 9 percent needs to be low or mod, but A-BAG breaks it down by the different income groups, and you'll find that what they are, you know, what they want for their overall, you know, they'll give an overall number, and the amount, the percentage of very-low, low and mod is much beyond the 15 percent that is required.
We've produced disproportionately too many moderate units in the last six years, so...
That's right.
It's reflecting the ordinance.
It's disproportionate.
It's disproportionate. To the other level...
It's good that we're providing, yeah, exactly, we're short-changing the others, which, it's great that we're providing the moderate, that's, you know, it's great.
Right, because there's, I mean, clearly, there's more of a, there's even more of a need for more moderate than there are, you know, buyers, but, I mean, there's more buyers than there are units available at that level, but we're not proportionally meeting our other levels.
Now, the one thing that is part of the discussion is, in the past, we've heard about, well, do you, should the goal be to get those that qualify for very-low into ownership housing, or should there be more emphasis on rental? And what I've heard from my colleagues in the past, and what I agree with, is that we think that ownership housing, owner-occupied housing is the best, and it's true for, you know, the at-rate, at-market-rate housing, and it's true for affordable housing. I think that's right, and so, and so that's why I think we should go with the 5, 5, and 5. If we think that very-low for ownership is not the way to go, then you can somewhat justify short-changing very-low for ownership, but I just don't think we should go there. I think we should try it, try the 5, 5, and 5.
I may well end up agreeing with you, John, and I said that when you brought that idea up for the first time, but I would like to get the input from the community just because it helps broaden, I mean, this is a big change, and I'd like to, you know, I'd like to feel like I've looked at all sides of it before I do that, but I'm probably going to end up being there.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the community of the builders and the developers, too.
I mean, it doesn't have to take all night.
Not only, because, you know, we're all in this together, but clearly, they may have their hand on the pulse of what is actually happening right now in the housing market, and what we may be discussing here may indeed be an academic exercise in terms of housing in the next 10 years.
And the other thing is, I mean, you know, we had that bubble before where it was all office buildings, and then, you know, the dot-com bust happened, and then people mid-stage converted places that were going to be offices to housing units, and we're looking at the reverse of that trend right now. So I think the main thing I want to find out from people is, you know, by doing this, recognizing the fact that we're going to be looking at a tighter housing market, are we doing something that's going to just further discourage housing development?
Exactly.
Beyond what's happening just by virtue of the economy? That's the knowledge I want to gain and feel comfortable with, that I don't feel like I have right now. And again, I'd like to be able to analyze these numbers side by side.
Well, it looks like under Point 1, you have an okay to proceed with the revision there.
Well, Nora made a motion for 1, 2, and 3.
Right.
And I seconded that.
You see, all we're doing here is giving the staff direction to pull this together and bring it back to us. This is not the buy-all-and-end-all. It'll come back to us, right?
Yes.
All right, well, I'll...
And we will have more knowledge by that time.
I'll support 1, 2, and 3 also. Anybody want to, Ken or John, you're against 1, 2, or...
No, I'm not against 1, 2, and 3. I would just make a similar motion after we're done with that for 4.
Okay, I, I think we should hold off just for this meeting. You want to hold off, right?
Yeah, on 4.
On 4.
And get this input, but soon. I mean, I've got a feeling these folks can kind of come in and talk to us.
Yeah, I want to have a meeting here.
I want to hear from the housing builders.
And what's that, 3, 2?
Yeah, yes.
What do you say, Ken?
For just Ken.
Do you want to hear from the builders, or you don't care?
No, I want to hear from them.
All right, 4, 1.
Okay, let's go. All right. So, there's no questions for, you're Ann, right? Yeah, about bridge or anything, huh? Okay, thank you both.
Our best regards to Carol Galante.
I'll adjourn the special meeting, and thank you for your patience and...